Good morning, everyone. I'd like to, uh, call this work session for October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. For, uh, I'll let Commissioner Billings get settled in there, but just real quick, uh, wanna thank, uh, our county manager, Ms. Webb, welcome back, appreciate it. Go forward, and we have a lot of work to do, so. You know how it goes, you're used to this, so thank you, and thank you for coming back. If you can all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the state flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect friendship among the united quarters.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, next item on the agen- next item on the agenda is gonna be the approval of the work session agenda.
So move.
A second. So a motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Brown, do we have any discussion? Seeing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Pre- under presentations, um, we have a presentation by the Grant County Community Health Council, an update from Ms. Amora, you wanna come up, please?
Do I turn this on? Well, good morning, everyone, um, Commissioners, thank you for having me here today, and thank you to everyone, members of the audience, and anybody on virtual, I don't know if that's on, but, as Commissioner Place has said, I'm here to update you on, um, the actions of the Grant County Community Health Council. Um, there's a couple of things that have been happening in the last, since I was here last month. One of them is that we're working in conjunction with the New Mexico Department of Health to develop a community health improvement plan, and what they're calling it is CHIP, a CHIP. So when you hear CHIP, that's what that means. And also, um, the Department of Health and New Mexico is also, um, addressing a statewide health improvement plan, and we are part of that. And the purpose of the community health improvement plan is that health councils are to develop their own health improvement plan, um, that reflects the needs of their own communities, um, and to identify the social determinants of some of the health issues that we as, um, a community face. So in the last month, we've had two community meetings, um, uh, we invited, you know, a whole, uh, list of folks that, um, anybody we could think of, everyone, uh, to attend these meetings and come to listen to our, um, data that was presented by Dr. Josh Whaley with the Department of Health, specific to Grant County. So, we've had two sessions, we had light attendance, but we had some very interesting conversations. So the purpose is that the community identify their own plan, so that's where we're headed. And by June, I believe June, two thousand and twenty-three, we should have a plan in place, and this is all health councils across the state, working with Department of Health. So, um, let me put on my glasses, um, so we've had our two meetings, and now we're going to have more discussion and identify some of the priorities that the community feels, you know, are, are necessary. So right now, we've had the two meetings, and we'll continue with the process. And, um, we, we were presented with some interesting data with regard to Grant County. Um, I think that it was up to two thousand and twenty, so we know there's gonna be some changes in the data. Um, some of the data just was, was about housing, poverty, suicide rates, the data that's applicable to our community specifically. So, um, let's see, that's a lot of what we've been doing. Um, I, I always bring up the fact that we're rural, because our needs are different than the metropolitan areas, as we know, so this is a really nice process to be able to give that feedback. And, let's see, the other part that I wanted to talk about is on Thursday, November third, at six to seven, in this, uh, in this room, we're having a general health council meeting for the general public, and we want to reintroduce the health council from years past, and talk about what some of our goals are, how we're being funded, and, um, you know, how we operate. We'll, we'll address structure and funding, and, um, the, how we function financially. So right now, we're working on a few things other than what I mentioned before, uh, we're working on health council capacity. And we really appreciate the support of the Commissioners that we've had to get this accomplished. We are recipients of the CDC grant monies, Calogun Foundation monies, Department of Health monies, and HB two junior monies that was allocated to us from our legislators. So we're working really hard on developing, um, strategies and information regarding the homeless issues in our community. Again, we're working on, uh, building capacity for health councils, so, uh, we are working closely with the county and looking as part of building capacity also, how we can share resources and, um, maybe some FTEs, hopefully, and just look at how we can work together to share some of these resources. Our HB two junior monies will expire, um, end of June, I believe, June thirtieth of this, of two thousand and twenty-three, so we need to get those monies expended and do the things that we've agreed to do as part of the scope of work for those monies. And, um, so again, um, this little flyer is posted out there somewhere, I think. So November third is when we have our meeting at six to seven, and we'll give more information to the general public. And it's been posted, I believe, in the appropriate places. So, any questions? There's, there's a number to call for any further questions about the meeting. So at this point, we're really going and, um, addressing some of the things that are at hand right now. We just need to continue to build that capacity, and hopefully that our funding will be sustainable for the next few years. Um, and I think it was two thousand and seventeen, the funding was drastically cut by Department of Health. So, we're looking at all avenues right now, and I believe, um, the Department of Health and the Alliance are going before the legislature and asking for, I believe it's one hundred and twenty-five thousand per health council throughout New Mexico. So we're, we're hoping for the best. And that's pretty much what I wanted to inform you about, so I'm open to answer any questions regarding what I talked about, or anything else.
Commissioners, do we have any questions? Commissioner Edwards?
Good morning, Evangelion.
Good morning.
Thanks so much for being here, and for all the work you've been doing for the health councils over a lot of years, so.
Thank you, thank you.
We so appreciate you. So, um, couple things, um, going back to the community health improvement plan. Um, who's, who's doing the planning process? Is it facilitated, is it funded by DOH? Can you give us a little bit more detail about how you're gonna get from here to there?
Okay. Well, I guess it will, will, will produce, uh, and how that's gonna work out, we're following the guidance of the Department of Health. There's a regional team that's helping us through that process, so we've done the first piece with the meetings that we have for the community at large, and then we're just waiting for the next piece from their guidance. They are, um, let's see, they are gonna be our support team, and they're, we're just following their lead, but that's kind of the why, the why is, as is explained in this document, is the New Mexico State Health Improvement Plan, which is the CHIP, provides a framework to execute the statewide health improvement plan process. The CHIP is intended to provide leadership and oversight for the development of a statewide approach to engage the public health system and its partners. This process includes a state health assessment, which is SHA, leading to the implementation of a CHIP. State health organizations enhance their capacity to address and monitor priority health issues. So, we're just following their guidance at this point.
So, a couple things, first, can you share that document that you're reading from with us?
Yes, definitely.
That would be great, so maybe you can send it to Kevin, and Kevin can distribute it, that would be awesome.
Okay.
And so, so there's a regional team that is giving you guidance on how to do this.
Yes.
Is the region, quote-unquote, focused on rural, or is, what is the region, what is your region team covering?
It's the southwest region, so we use, um, um, the, the folks from, that are assigned to this, this piece of the, of the community. And that's out of the.
What I'm trying to get at, is that, is that Dojana County, or is it just the Fort County area, what is it?
Well, I'm not sure if they include Dojana, but I believe they do, but we definitely are looked at specifically. In fact, we just had a meeting yesterday afternoon to discuss just what's particular to Grant County. So their focus is just Grant County, in terms, in terms of the meetings that we're having.
So I wasn't, I was not able to attend either of the meetings with Dr. Whaley, but I would really love to see the data that he presented. Um, is that available, either in a PowerPoint or a document that you can share with us?
Yes, I, in fact, I have the document with me, and I can either email it to Kevin, or I can leave my document for copies for you.
What would really be great is if you'd share the document with Kevin, so that he could make copies.
Okay, I do have a copy with me, and I also have the, the, the form that I just talked about.
That would be great.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, uh, a couple things, how many members are there now in the Community Health Council?
Um, I don't have a number, we have, um, we have six networks, and then we have ten, um, steering committee positions, they're not all filled right now, and then we have the networks, and what I failed to mention is we're planning a strategic plan, planning meeting, um, hopefully before December, to develop and identify the networks even further. So, that, that is one of our, um, goals, is to do that, so that we can be very structured as to who is in what network, and the leadership for each network.
And the networks are roughly analogous to what used to be called the life cycles?
By the way, they're very, yes, they're very similar.
Okay.
Yep.
So it's no longer thirty people?
No longer thirty people.
Okay, I, I missed that transition.
So the steering committee is limited to the ten positions, but the networks itself, um, are, can be anyone that has an interest or is providing services in that specific network.
Right.
For example, the anti-poverty network may include the issues of homelessness, uh, food insecurity, things along those lines.
Okay.
We're hoping to develop, that's one of our major goals, in doing and having our, um, strategic plan coming up soon.
Great, thanks. And, and the other question is, maybe both for you and the Chair, um, you mentioned homelessness.
Yes.
As one of the focuses that, that you're looking at.
Yes.
Uh, and I know the Chair has been active on a, a task force about that, are, are, is that the same thing? Or are you working together with?
Yeah, we're working together, and as a matter of fact, I think right now, we're at the stage of, uh, of a survey, aren't we?
Yes.
With some of the monies that the health council has, and, uh, I think, uh, Ms. Amora can probably explain to you a little bit as to what that's gonna, uh, look into, or, or get our community input through that.
Yes, we're, one of our, our scope of work areas is to develop a survey, and in fact, we just met about that yesterday, to see where everybody's at that's working on it. So it may change a little bit as we go, 'cause we're finding the information that we need. Um, could be gained by having just general discussions with folks that are, that may be experiencing homelessness, and some of the folks that provide services in the community, so we're, we're trying to, trying to bring all that information together to present as part of our phase two, and, um, and talk about, okay, what, this is what we're hearing. One of the things that has come up is the length of time that shelters are open. Right now, that's just something that we've heard, but we haven't put it into any sort of formal, you know, report. And that's our goal, is to put that into a formal report, in terms of what we find from our survey and discussions, interviews, putting that all together.
Okay, great, thank you both.
Soon as, uh, they come up with the other questions, and there's quite, you know, a few working on it, I'll make sure that you guys get a copy of it, too.
Yes, and that's what we're looking for, is to put that in some sort of manuscript or final report to present to the Commissioners, and then to the, um, folks that it may be in law, involved in the task force, as it develops.
And then I'm sure as we go down the road, and unfortunately, was it Tuesday, I had to go to an event, I couldn't go to this other one, but I think as we move on, we'll probably get more people off of recommendations from other citizens and Commissioners to.
Perfect.
To get this going.
And we're also trying to join up with other, um, um, organizations that are already addressing that, the Rural Health Network, um, we're going to try to attend those sessions with them, and gain feedback and give feedback, so that's where we're at right now. Um, I forgot to mention, um, let's see, let's see if I can find it here. At our third, meeting next, not this Thursday, but next week, we will have, let's see if I can find that name. We will have somebody from the, um, let's see, New Mexico Fin- Mortgage Finance Authority presenting a short presentation regarding that, I forgot to mention that. That would be Donna Miestis from MFA, and she will be addressing, from my understanding, housing strategy. So, that will be part of our, uh, general meeting next week. I won't be available, but, um, we have Valerie Kling, who is the co-chair for the Grant County Community Health Council, facilitating that session.
Commissioner Edwards?
So I had a follow-up question to a question that Harry asked, so there's ten steering committee members, and then you have all these networks.
Yes.
So does each steering committee member facilitate a network?
Yes, yes, and they, they should be having their own meetings, each network, but that's a part that still needs development, and, um, and that's part of our strategic planning. And then we added, um, we amended the bylaws to, I believe we amended the bylaws to include four more steering committee members that may not be associated with any one particular area, but, um, we're looking at the mining district, um, the area, uh, toward Hila, to, to have representation from those areas as well, and they're steering committee members at large. So we still have to fill those.
That represent a geographical area.
Yes, there you go.
As opposed to an issue.
Yes, since it's.
That's a really good idea, yeah.
There's different issues in different areas, even with our own rural areas, as you know, so that's what we're trying to get representation to reflect all that.
So it would be, um, really nice to have an org chart also, once you get all that figured out, maybe once you, you know, have done your strategic plan and that kind of thing, you can come back and report to us about.
Okay.
The results of that, and it'd be nice to see the org chart, and what those seats represent, and, you know, the networks that they represent.
We definitely will, well, uh, we just recently adjusted it a bit, and not sure if we gave you copies or not, but I'm definitely gonna provide copies to you after our strategic planning session, as you said, for any, to reflect further changes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Thank you, Ms. Amora, I appreciate that of the.
Thank you, thank you for your support.
Thank you. So moving on to next item, uh, on our agenda is gonna be under discussions, we're gonna have a Item B, discussion of Baton Park, uh, I'm gonna, what I'm gonna do is Commissioner Salas had asked this be put on the agenda, so I'm gonna go to Commissioner Salas, and then I'm gonna go to Ms. Howe there for a while. You can wait a few minutes, Ms. Howe, if you want, and then we'll, we'll see what, Ms. Howe, you can wait a few minutes, let's see what Commissioner Salas has to say, and then we can go from there. Thank you, go ahead, Commissioner Salas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, some time ago, we had entertained the idea of using some ARPA money to do some improvements at, uh, Baton Park, but then we had the opportunity to put in for a grant, which we, we thought would be coming in soon. But that doesn't look like it's, the, the wheels of that are turning very slow.
It's the quality of life.
Yes, okay, so we wanted to wait on that, uh, so that, then we could, uh, combine monies and make, uh, a better decision, but since those have slowed down, I wanted to open up for discussion, so that there's, there's some improvements that, that need to be done. The electrical, the heating, the, the cooling, uh, bathrooms. So I wanted to open up a discussion to see the possibility of us using some ARPA money to go ahead and make those improvements to Baton Park, even withstanding, uh, waiting for the quality of life grant. So that was, uh, the whole intent of me wanting to put that on the agenda. You know, because those are, we, we really want Baton to be a focus of some of our community activities, you know, not just for, uh, the Baton, uh, the Death Mark celebration, but for a lot of events in the county, you know. Hopefully, in the future, it can become a center, you know, for our trails. Uh, we, there's a lot of use out there by community members, uh, there's a lot of, uh, youth out there, and believe it or not, there's a lot of people that go out there and walk and just enjoy the place. So I wanna make sure that we have, uh, some good facilities, so that, you know, for future use. So I open it up for any discussion.
So I think, uh, you know, and I, I get, I know that our Governor, and I mean, Tony Governor was gracious enough, what, two years ago, to give us seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for improvements, is that right, Charlie? And you were here, so. I remember, anyway, and Randy, and this year, we ended up with like four hundred thousand dollars, correct? That we haven't, so I think what we need to do is maybe, if, if off the top of your head, Randy, if you can let us know what maybe the approximate figure is now, so we can look at the ARPAs, to how much it would take, uh, quality of life, what was submitted, and all that, if you don't mind.
So there, there are a few, um, we do have the four hundred and fifty thousand, um, capital appropriation that we're still pending the agreement on, those bond sales are supposed to, uh, go in, uh, sometime in December, I believe, um, was that? Uh, they had a, they pushed it back, they asked the counties if they were willing to wait for certain bond sales, and, and at the time, the county manager agreed to it, so we waited to push those bond sales for the, those capital appropriations to December. That one is four hundred and fifty thousand, uh, the county received a junior appropriation in the amount of sixty thousand dollars, um, and that was for general maintenance for Baton Park. Excuse me, um, and I believe that, believe that's all, uh, off the top of my head. Um, if you continue discussion, I can look up on my computer, and I can, I can bring that up, bring that up for you really quick.
And that, this, the four fifty and the sixty thousand were for the year two thousand and twenty-two, correct?
Those were the ones that we just received.
Just received, okay.
In the past years, we received, um, one in two thousand and twenty, and one was for three hundred and fifty thousand.
There's the other one.
Um, there was another one back in two thousand and fourteen for a hundred and fifty thousand, and then, of course, the CDBG, that was over a million dollars.
And what's, do we know the status of the Quality of Life Grant? I know, we ask you this every month.
I don't, I don't, and I keep asking, I keep asking myself, and at this point, they've made some recommendations, uh, and it's my understanding that these, uh, their recommendations are at the desk of the Governor, so at this point, we're just waiting for final approval on those. Uh, and then for, also for Baton Park, we did submit to the Land Water and Conservation Fund, uh, a request for funding as well, that one was a max of two hundred and fifty thousand, um, and that is due, um, the applications are due, uh, mid-November, uh, so I, I think it's either mid or end of November. Uh, so at that point, there'll be a review process, uh, that through the Energy and Minerals, uh, Natural Resources Department.
Commissioner? Go ahead, Commissioner Salas.
Now, Randy, it was my understanding that Jason had made some preliminary, uh, estimates of some of the projects that we wanted to do out there, such as getting the electrical upgrades and the bathrooms, and stuff like that. So, uh, I wonder if we could have some of those estimates, so that we could, uh, we could make some informed decisions up here.
Yes, he did get some preliminary estimates when we were submitting for the Quality of Life Grant. So his estimates for that application, which are probably the most recent ones that he, but, he's obtained, are for the pavilion renovations, which is to renovate the existing facility for ADA restrooms, uh, replace the swamp cooler, um, plumbing for liquid propane, for, I believe it's, he, for if there were to ever be a kitchen out there, or for some heating elements, that was a hundred thousand dollars, uh, his estimate. Uh, the pavilion electrical upgrades, uh, which is installation of a four hundred A service, uh, that was, came in at a hundred and forty-nine thousand. Uh, the Conex bathroom removal, uh, which is removing those existing, um, bathroom facilities out there, which is like the Conex building, was twenty thousand. The vaulted bathroom install, which would be like the ones that you see at the Forest Service picnic rooms, um, he quoted those at a hundred and forty-five thousand. And turf replacement for all three fields, uh, which would be removal and replacement of the new ones, was one point three million. So total, uh, total renovations estimated at this point for Baton Park is one point seven million, oh, nearly one point eight.
Okay, on, on the bathrooms, were we going to be able to use vault toilets out there? Since it is now in, uh, in the central city limits, I mean, Santa Clara city limits.
Um, that's more of a Jason question, so I can answer that off the top of my head, but I believe he's done his due diligence, so I understand that that's probably the best route for it.
Okay.
Go ahead, uh, Commissioner Edwards?
So, um, this is, I, I don't, I'm having a hard time pulling up in my brain the previous conversation we had about this, um, specifically related to ARPA. Um, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around the fact that ARPA would support this. Is that gonna fall under economic development? How's, how is, how would ARPA support this expenditure?
So there's been a little bit of a change when it comes to the final rule. Um, the interim rule, uh, when we initially got the ARPA dollars, was somewhat more restrictive. Uh, once they changed the final rule, and for entities that receive less than ten million dollars, uh, which is the county, we've received five point, five point two, um, they've, uh, loosened the, the strings a little bit, and a lot of, a lot of the expenses that the county, uh, is doing it, they're just classifying it as provisions of government services. So if the county was intending to do this certain project, the county can continue those certain projects, uh, as it falls under that certain provision. We just still have to be careful that there is, there are still the, the restrictions for, um, general infrastructure, uh, which would be buildings, uh, bridges, and things of that nature, as well as, uh, economic development, and workforce-related items that we, that, those ARPA plans are still restricted.
So, um, tell me what we applied for with Quality of Life, remind me how much money we applied for on that?
For the Baton Park, we submitted an application for, uh, one point seven million dollars.
Under the Quality of Life Grant?
That's correct, for Baton Park. And then there was a separate application, if you recall, for the, uh, Hila Community Center and Park.
Right. So theoretically, if we got fully funded on the Quality of Life, that would cover the Baton Park renovations?
Theoretically, yes, and then.
Or come, or come very close.
Yeah, yeah, and then hopefully, we are, we're looking at, at, um,
And then.
That Land and Water Conservation Fund, if we do get funded on that.
So then we would have, if we got the, uh, LFCW, and we combined that with the, um, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of capital outlay, then we would have, um, an additional seven hundred thousand that we could spend. So we could combine that seven hundred thousand and the one point seven Quality of Life, and make the Baton Park renovations happen, provided we got the full amount on the Quality of Life, right?
Yeah, that sounds like about right, if we got everything that we asked for, yes.
Even, sorry, Commissioner Edwards, but, I mean, looking at here, if we go one point seven, one point three for the turf, that may be a decision that we may have to make down the road to hold off a little bit on that and complete everything else. Because the, the turf alone is one point three million, if I'm correct, right?
That's correct.
Out of the one point seven.
Right.
So we may have to maybe do one field, or two, or we'll have to discuss that.
Phase it out.
Well, I was, uh, yeah, and I totally see what you're saying, and I think we should talk about that phased if we don't get the whole one point seven.
Right, yes, yes.
Yeah, so.
Or if the costs have gone up.
Or if the costs have gone up since we last talked about it, which is almost guaranteed. So the four, okay, so before I, before my little brain is committed to this path that I'm on, the four hundred and fifty thousand of capital outlay, the scope that you're working on, would cover the repairs that you've, or the renovations that you've talked about, we can use that for those renovations.
Right, so that capital appropriation is four hundred and fifty thousand, obviously, that has the generic language for it.
Right.
Plan, design, construct, equip, and furnish, so depending on, on, uh, decisions made by either the governing body or county manager, we will obviously run with, run with that to accomplish any upgrades to there.
So it's.
So it's pretty, it's vague in nature, so.
Right.
But it must be used at Baton Park.
So we put all of it into that, if we got the whole thing, okay. Well, I guess I would just say that, um, I, I'm still in favor of waiting to see if we get the Quality of Life Grant before we commit ARPA dollars to it.
Yeah, and unfortunately, when they originally told us about this grant, that there was supposed to be announcement right by August thirty-first.
Right.
And we're approaching November, and we still don't have any.
October thirty-first.
We're approaching October, October thirty-first, and we still don't have any answers yet, so hopefully. Uh, I, I don't know when, and I, I don't want to give you guys a timeframe and, and not meet that, just because that's coming from, from the state.
So we could, I, I just want to recognize that, um, that Commissioner Solis, that this has been a big project for Commissioner Solis, and that he has, um, uh, really been, um, a very positive and vocal voice for Baton Park. So we could still, we could wait till the December meeting to make a decision about spending ARPA money on this and, and give us a little bit more time to see if the Quality of Life Grant came through, right?
I would, I would agree to that, I mean, if that's something that you wanted. There's plenty, there's, obviously, there's, um, a lot of ARPA dollars left over, uh, depending on the results of the election, depending on the bonds, um, uh, and if those are approved by the voters, that's also another source of funds for, for it, um, so there are some avenues for.
So we have some ways that we could commit to getting this work done.
Correct.
Between now and the end of the year, I guess.
Yeah, you could choose to wait also, if, if he wanted to, if you guys, uh, you as a board chose to allocate ARPA funding for it, um, contingent on maybe if there wasn't some awards coming down the road that would maybe take away from ARPA, uh, obviously, that could, that could be an option for you too. So, or if you just choose to wait entirely, entirely, that will be, it's at your discretion.
Right, so we could push it off till, well, obviously, we're not gonna make a decision today, so we could put it on the agenda in November.
That's assuming knowledge that the ARPA requests were gonna be placed on the agenda for November anyway, so yes.
And hopefully, we would know something. But then, at that point, we could elect to do a contingent.
Yeah, that would probably maybe a recommendation, that you allocate the entire amount of ARPA dollars for it, and then contingent on certain grants throughout the, throughout the timeframe where the project would decrease the ARPA allocation. That could also be an option for you.
So this is just gonna be my, my final comment. I'm, with other sources of funding pending for Baton, uh, you know, like I said, I, I really, I, I also want us to do these renovations at Baton Park. I think Baton Park is, um, a huge, uh, piece of our overall outdoor rec, uh, plans, and I would really love to see these things get going. Um, I'm also, uh, admittedly reluctant to spend ARPA money on this if we have other possible sources of funding, 'cause we have, I think, plenty of other things that we could spend ARPA money on that would benefit the community as well. So that's kind of where I'm at on that.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Solis.
Well, I, I know that our, our, uh, the state money is a given, it's just we have to wait for it. Okay, but, uh, the grant money is the unknown. And it was my understanding, one of the problems with, uh, the Quality of Life, is that there was a lot of applicants. So, uh, the possibility of that coming to fruition is going to be, well, I mean, we're hopeful, but it could, uh, it might not happen, or it might not happen to the amount that we asked for. Okay, so that is a big unknown, so that's why I wanted to bring this discussion. And again, it's a discussion, so everybody can get their thoughts into it. You know, so, uh, that way, we can look about, we can think about it, we can see what the costs are gonna be. The only thing that I would like is some of the estimates that, that Jason got, you know, for the kitchen, for the bathrooms, for air conditioning, and all that stuff, so that when it does come time, then, then for next month, that we can, uh, make an informed decision, okay? And if, if you're gonna have Jason email that stuff to us, it would be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner Billings.
So has there been a, we're talking about estimates, but has there, there been a plan, oh, sorry. Has there been a plan drawn up for, um, like a short-range plan, long-range plan?
No, uh, as you recall, the county received some money, um, I think it was fifty thousand dollars for a, um, Parks and Recreation Plan. Uh, at this point, as of yesterday, I received a proposal from the SE Group, the ones, the, they're the firm that is doing the, um, Trails and Outdoor Recreation Comprehensive Plan. Uh, so to, maybe, they're, they're looking, possibly looking at tying those together, and especially they're the contractor that's already familiar with this plan, they're familiar with this area. Uh, but at this point, it's, it's preliminary stages, and I just received the proposal yesterday evening, and I have not had a, a chance to, to look at that.
So wouldn't it be, um, smart to come up with a plan to decide what we want to do, then come up with estimates?
Uh, Commissioner Billings, yes, we've had those conversations here, a couple of meetings, so at this point, uh, you know, it's at the discretion of the board, if whether you want to wait for a plan, or if you would like to allocate some money for renovations, uh, you know, at this point, these are, this is up to you all.
Well, I trust, um, uh, some of the commissioners to, to know what needs to be done of, of, over there to a degree, but still, I would like, uh, yeah, some sort of a plan. And quick, 'cause we've been talking about this for a long time.
We, we know the plan, you know, we want a plan for the park, and not just the park, for, for everything that, that Grant County does. But we know for sure the plan is going to include some of these items. But, you know, uh, there's, there's other ideas and other things that we could do, not just at Baton, but at other places.
And I'd like to see, I, I don't know what I'm talking about out there, but let me make it a hypothetical example. We don't want to put in one point three million dollars' worth of turf unless there's a plan in place to protect that turf for the long range, like from flooding, and maybe that's not, maybe that's already been done, I think it has. But from whatever else that might happen to it, uh, you know, that he just, we, we, we'll install the turf, and then we're gonna protect it by A, B, C. And then, then we'll have a, uh, we won't be looking at redoing some of this, and a vault toilet is an outhouse, right?
Like the four shos. Except the four shos.
Really nice one, big, big block event.
Okay.
And, and the reason that, and I think the reason Jason and Randy went through that is because in the past, they had problems with people throwing rocks into the toilet itself, so it was causing problems. So we had a discussion about using what the Forest Service does, so when they throw rocks in there, they could still go in there and clean them up. I just didn't know how expensive or, or if it can be done.
So there's quite a bit of planning that's already been done here?
Some of it.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, I was gonna make a similar comment to Commissioner Billings' comment, um, and among the things that, uh, we don't have a plan about is the use of that facility in emergencies. In, uh, much of this, we've discussed before, and I share the feeling that we haven't made progress. Uh, but that was a key one, right? Are we gonna try to use that pavilion in the case of, let's say, a wildfire that displaces dozens or hundreds of people? Hopefully dozens. Or does it make more sense to use, and we talked about other facilities, right? The armory, we talked about Cobray High School Gym, there are other facilities, and, and that needed the emergency manager's attention, as I recall. And, and that particular decision influenced a very large amount of expenditures, because, at least from my perspective, if we're not planning to use it for that function, we don't need to prepare it for housing people. Uh, and that has implications for what we do with those large garage doors that are so incredibly energy efficient, inefficient. So those doors are an open question. It has implications for whether we need a four hundred amp service or a two hundred amp service. I mean, it, it, there's a lot of things. The sewer facilities, uh, get designed for that rather than other uses possible, or the, uh, septic facilities. Uh, I, I feel like there's just a ton of questions still. And it may be true, Commissioner Solis, that there are some things we're gonna do no matter what, but frankly, I'm not sure what they are at this point. And I don't know if you have a list in your head. If there are some things we could do now, 'cause we know we will definitely need them, and we know that there aren't savings to be had by doing them in concert with other things we're gonna do, then I would support going ahead with those things. But that's two questions I don't know the answers to, right? Which ones are they that we know we're gonna do anyway? And does it, is it gonna be inefficient to do them first, and then come back later and do other things? Or does it make more sense to package it all together?
You know, Commissioner Brown, one of the things that we suffer from is indecision.
Indeed.
We've been talking about this for such a long time. And, and you, you know why the expediency that I want to get something done, because, you know, I'm just about done here. A- and I realize that, and it's not that, that I want to leave some kind of legacy, but I just want to leave a plan going forward. I, I would really like for us to make a decision. I- if we decided that was gonna be a center, you know, for, uh, emergency shelters, then, you know, let's do it. But to this point, we haven't decided a thing. So, uh, there's other possibilities, like you say, the convention center, and, and, you know, possibly schools and stuff, so, uh, I just think that we need to come to some kind of conclusion on this. I, I know some of the things that, that we can do at, at Baton could be done whether or not, you know, we make, we decide that's going to be a, a shelter or not. So, uh, that's why I really wanted to open up this discussion, which is good. And, uh, maybe we can come to a, a plan, just like, you know, a, a, a plan for our Parks and Rec, you know? Uh, uh, that's coming through, and, and part, but I know that's gonna take a while. And that's not gonna be something that's going to be done, you know, uh, very quickly. So, uh, maybe, maybe we can, I, I'm all in favor of waiting to see, you know, uh, I would love for that, that, uh, grant to come in, you know, so, uh, yeah, let's wait, and then, but planting the seed and, and saying, okay, well, let's think about this, and let's come to something.
So I'm gonna throw a little wrench in your, in our indecision stuff. Because I talked to, and I'm not saying it's gonna sit well, I'm not saying it's gonna happen, I'm not saying it's not. You know, I don't know how some of our, our, uh, community members are, are gonna take this, but I did have, and, and part of the reason that I went this way is because I think all of us were at the Baton rededication. And we saw the cars lined up all along the, the roadway there, which is not a, y- y- you know, safety wasn't the best there, and we had canopies with people selling items, food booths, and so forth. So what I did is I called our, our Public Land Commissioner and asked them if right directly across Baton Park, if there was any way that she could help with us getting at least five acres on that other side of it for a parking lot, because if we continue to hold these events with food booths unless we make a plan to have them somewhere else, I think the safest and the best bet would be to park right across. That way, you will cross the street, put a crosswalk, do whatever we need to do, instead of walking along the roadway, because it is a little narrow. I don't know where that's gonna go, I don't know if the community will, will be for that, I don't know if the commissioner will be for that, but at the end of the day, it's, we're, you know, it, it may take a few years or so to, uh, for that to even be on the agenda, or, or, or we need to go on that. So just to let you know, that's where I've been at lately.
Well, I think that's, you know, given the kinds of things that we've talked about in terms of usage, you know, uh, softball tournaments and baseball tournaments and things like that, I completely agree that we need to have adequate parking in order to accommodate those kinds of events. And there are also certain kinds of events, um, that need, uh, other kinds of resources. You know, we might need an area that we could bring a bunch of, um, uh, porta-potties into, and, you know, food trucks, and all kinds of things like that. So I'm, I'm, appreciate the fact that you're thinking about, uh, that parking, 'cause that was a little scary walking down that road. And I made, completely, you know, able to do that. But I could still get run over by somebody that wasn't watching or whatever. I have a couple of follow-up questions that, about things that were brought up by other commissioners, and one is, am I correct in remembering that the, that part of the reason why the turf needs to be replaced is because we didn't have a maintenance plan for it? Now, I know there were some flooding issues, but wasn't there some specific maintenance that needed to be done on that turf in order to protect our investment in that?
If I remember, if I remember correctly, part of it was what we took care of through the ADA and the flooding, and the other part was we didn't have the equipment to maintain the turf. It takes a special, I want to call it a vacuum cleaner, but I don't.
An industrial size.
Yeah, to, to take care of that, it, it's a specialized tool, so I think that was a lot of what ended up happening with that turf.
So we need to make absolutely sure before we invest one fourth, three million dollars in turf, that we actually have the equipment to take care of that investment. So that needs to be part of that, um, estimate for that, which might increase the likelihood of that being a phased project, but, um, I, I really don't want to invest without being able to maintain it. And so that also, you know, is that a, a maintenance thing that will add to our staffing needs? So I think we need to ask that question as well. And then, um, Harry mentioned the garage doors, we've had a lot of conversation around those garage doors, there was, oh, I remember. So one thing that I also, uh, would not want to do is invest in infrastructure at Baton Park with the idea of using it for, uh, emergency shelter, if there was other, if there were other options. So the infrastructure's already there at the Armory, or at the Convention Center, or at Cobray High School. They already have sewers, they already have capacity for, you know, however many hundreds of students there are. And so, um, part of what we may want to do is make sure that we have at least some initial conversations around, um, what, what is the emergency plan? And maybe that's Justin's, maybe Justin's already working on that. But there is our plan for housing, um, in case of an emergency on that side of the county. Um, and then the third thing that I was wondering, you know, we've talked about the toilets an awful lot, and, um, I can't remember, it's, it seems to me like the last time I was out there, and the last time I toured Baton Park with, um, Jason, that we didn't have very good toilet facilities. And so in the conversation of, is there something that we need to do right away that wouldn't be affected by other, you know, that you wouldn't have to like tear it down to restart it? Are those vault toilets one of those things? Because, um, you know, I, it's funny how many conversations I've had in the last two weeks with people who are talking about increased outdoor rec opportunities, where there is no conversation about toilet facilities. And so what are people doing? They're not gonna stop going to the bathroom. And so, uh, that is one thing, you know, I just remember that our toilet situation out there isn't very good, and so, you know, is that something we could be looking at as an immediate project?
That might be the electrical and the toilet priority, is the priorities, yeah, on our discussion or, or, or that. Anyway, anything else on this, Commissioners, Commissioner Solis?
Appreciate the conversation, thank you.
You know, part of this discussion also is gonna be, Ms. Howell, if you want to come up here, this is dealing with Baton Park also, so.
Hi, I'm Laura Howell, thank you guys, and I'm here with, um, oh, is it not on?
Just that little button.
White one, okay. Ooh, red button. I'm here with, uh, Dawn Turner and Kathy Howell, and, um, ma'am. Mary Alice, we've all worked on the community committee for the Baton, and we want to thank you guys so much. We're grateful for all of the beauty that you're creating out there, so keep the potty talk going, okay? What I brought is, um, the committee had offered to the citizens of Grant County who had men during the Baton Death March who participated, if they wanted to honor them, and we have seventeen plaques that are ready to go. I'll just kind of pass them out, and you can kind of see. Kind of give you an idea.
You picked up the exact right number, so.
I'm not sure, I mean, I got two more. They give you kind of an idea. And we have seventeen of them and we would like to um they come with a Plexiglas copper that goes over it, topper, with a an extension thing. They're the same sort of quality that were done on the inside of the uh I call it the structure, but it's really the box car concrete thing, technical term. And um we would like to put the, maybe install these inside of the um of the structure with the dedication plaque that would keep them nice and and safe. And um the other part of our project is the webpage. If you know, on the kiosks, we took out the old dead tile that was in there and replaced it with the same uh material for the kiosks. And each of them has a QR code. And the QR code goes to a title for a webpage and we own the um the county, you own the um the URL. It is Baton Memorial, Grant County, N M X N M dot com. And um each one of these go to, like this is the one for the march. Right now, the webpage is in notebooks, not really wired, okay? And uh we were in the middle of trying to make an agreement between the town and Silver City Museum, um the Silver City Museum and their uh historical society to kinda house it there, work with the county. And there needed to be some paperwork in it and when everybody, when the when the team changed, when the team changed, uh the website didn't get completed. And so that's one kinda dangly thing out there. We have people who have already written the content, we've had ma'am did some editing, we've got pictures. It's just a matter of don't, we've got donated time and content and that we would um then um we just need the support system of pu- of the people and the contract that, somebody will take care of this for perpetuity or whatever that great word is, right? So, any questions?
Great, thanks for all that work.
Hey, it's been our honor, we have met some great, great Grant County people, my gosh, Grant County gave so much for the Baton March. It's amazing.
Commissioner Edwards?
So I have a couple of questions. I think there's two asks here, I just wanna make clear that, so um are we are you asking our maintenance staff to install these plaques? What what needs to be done for completion of these plaques?
Well, we could either, yes, I would love Jason to take over and be able to put it in and I would stand there and help him. Or we could find somebody to do it within the committee, but we'd like permission before we start putting something on a county-owned structure. You know, we need to work together, collaborate. So whatever would work the best, we're willing to, we just wanna get them out there.
Okay, and then uh my second question is um on the website. So the county as an entity owns the URL, is that what you're saying?
I purchased it and it's under my name, but it'd be, we purchased it for five years, it's a hundred dollars for the URL. And we did that so that we could go ahead when we did the kiosks to have the QR codes match with what's going on. So it would be, it, the committee bought it, but it'd be, you know, handed on over.
And so if I understand you correctly, the content is ready.
Correct.
It just needs to be put on the website and then website hosting paid for and website updating as needed.
Correct, yeah, it needs to be nurtured somewhere.
Yes, okay, great. Well, I just, I wanna say that um I think this is, has been an amazing project from the beginning. So appreciate, these plaques are just gorgeous, would love to see those up there. And from my perspective, um I'm, I would be more than willing to have you work with the county manager on figuring out how we can do that, so that's that's my vote for that.
Okay, let's make it happen, thank you guys.
So just wanna tell you, I really appreciate everything that you guys have done, Mr. Turner. Everybody since this whole rededication started, all the meetings, all the work that you guys have put into it. I know you've done a lot of the advertising, uh had a lot to do with all this, so I really appreciate it and we we thank you. And my other thing is, I'm with Commissioner Edwards, is uh talk to the county manager, see how that can happen and we'll go from there.
Okay, great.
Commissioner Sallas?
Well, I I, my comment would be that, you know, it was a wonderful celebration. But I, it was more than just a celebration of Baton, I saw so many veterans there. You know, from even some veterans veterans from World War II, which are becoming very rare now. But Korea and Grant County has always sent a lot of its its people to the military. They've always answered the call. I think we had a presentation by, it was Jason the other day, which he told us that, you know, but it was I I think it was an affirmation of of, you know, the the county saying thank you to so many veterans. Which the plaques that you have presented there, you know, I I would hope that in the future, maybe we could expand things to account for uh other veterans. You know, there was a lot of action in World War II, we're talking about the Pacific. But I have a friend whose whose dad was, you know, went through Europe. And, you know, big battles, the Battle of the Bulge and, I mean, there was some, you know, D-Day and all the, so I'm 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 hoping that when everything is said and done, it will be a celebration of all veterans. Because I also, a lot, a lot of people have been to the desert, you know? And uh currently, we still have people there. So uh I think this is a fantastic thing. And I think the very beginning was a fantastic celebration that we had there, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Bill? Yeah, thank, thank you and uh thanks to the committee, it was uh quite an entertaining celebration. I know some things were uh turned out right out at the park, uh at the memorial and some of them didn't. So on these seventeen plaques, it, can you answer, why was, why is there just seventeen? Are you working on getting more, will there be, will there be room for more, is those become available?
We offered to the families who wanted to participate and um they did. We had seventeen people step up and do, which is pretty big, big deal. And we are continuing to add more with, if people want them. You know, we're just, we've put the offer out and the people respond, so.
So you have room for more then?
Yeah, there's room for more, uh-huh. It, and we thought with the square, we could make it so that it is expandable, you know, square shape of the the tiles.
Well, I support uh the, what's been said here about getting with the county manager, getting some direction about how you wanna go about that.
Okay, great.
I would support um y'all finding volunteers who can put them up that'll be done the way that you want it. Appropriately done, but uh rather than our maintenance department, but that'd be up to the county manager and you guys. I just wanna, I wanna avoid any more um of some of what 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 went on where it wasn't done right and it was your fault, no, it was your fault and well, if you would've done this and and we went through some of that, it was painful. And I just wanna avoid any more of that, so not to bring up old things, but it's, you know, still, I th- I think we I know we wasted some money out there and it's um, it's um, sticks in my craw and I wanna avoid that, so. Just wanna bring that up so we'll be aware of it, so it doesn't happen again with this or anything else going forward. And and I'm not blaming anyone, I'll take responsibility for what part I had and I just don't want it to happen again, so thanks.
Thank you. Welcome back, county manager.
Thank you.
So moving on to, Mr. Gill, under discussions, uh but before we go to that, commissioners, you guys are good with everything on that discussion? Moving on to item C is gonna be adopting a county local option grocery receipts tax?
Again, this is something I asked the chair to put on there for discussion. You know, we have so many things that we need and our budget is so finite, you know, it only goes so far. And we're not like a, you know, a corporation or anything that can look how to, how how we can create more money and that. So yeah, we're very limited in how we do things and there's so much to do. One of the things that came up, you know, is is the maintenance of the park, you know? We've we've talked before how we need a dedicated maintenance people for that, but to get that, we need the money to do it. So I wanted to open a discussion to see, you know, we had talked about it before, you know, uh about uh putting that increase in our grocery receipts tax, and I'm the last person that wants to increase taxes. But it is an option that we have and it's a viable option. So I wanna open a discussion to see what the rest of the members think and if this is something that we need to follow, follow up on. So I'll open it up.
Well, to me, I think, you know, it's hard raising taxes, but I mean, I I see what you're saying and I see what some of our goals and and some of the things that uh that we need to accomplish and you're right. Some of this money doesn't come in as fast or as much as we need or we want to provide better services for for residents, our communities, Grant County. You know, it's a hard thing to really look at it. But you know, right now, I I I'm pretty open-minded to to possibly agreeing to something like this. And the only thing that I would ask, if if, depending on how the other commissioners feel, is that we have a plan for this and that that plan be followed. You know, there's a lot of things that we want, we need, I just don't want this money to not provide services for a county in that it, we get distracted from a purpose for this money. And also, uh, you know, we have to look at our manpower, which that's, you know, our county manager will probably be looking at that here soon as far as, you know, where she's at or what she needs or what she doesn't need. But uh, you know, for me, I I I could, probably right now, I could probably say yes to it with a good definitive definitive plan, something on paper as to uh how we'll use this money and go from there. Those are looking at me like.
Something that would be really helpful to me is, I seem to recall, it's been a couple of years since we've talked about this, I wanna say. And it would be helpful to me to actually have the county manager refresh our memories a little bit on what this what this is, what what we're, what we would be doing exactly. Not to put you on the spot or anything.
I honestly don't remember what we had available. G R T from another county is fresh on my mind at the moment, so I would have to refresh my memory exactly what we were looking at, it was.
I couldn't take a shot.
So it would have to go to the voters, I recall, I don't think we have any.
I think it's a one-eighth that we don't have to go to the voters for.
That's true.
Two years ago, it was six hundred and fifty thousand a year, presumably more now. Uh, that, those are the facts I remember.
So Linda and I will do our research, um, 'cause I I don't remember exactly.
So that actually lines up with my memory about it, pretty close. And I definitely remember that we didn't have to go to the voters. And the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars seems about right. And we've talked about other one-eighths that would garner six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And I remember six hundred thousand, but I mean, it's it's right in there.
It's right in there.
It's right in there.
So really what we would need to do is um, I I agree with the chair. I'd like to at least have some idea of a plan. Um, and so what that would do is just be some additional, um, you know, thoughts in writing about what it would look like for us to spend an extra six hundred thousand dollars a year. You know, are we gonna prioritize vehicle replacement, are we gonna prioritize certain roads, you know, those kinds of things? But the the other question that I have and I I don't remember this, is there some kind of timing issue with this? Or can, that's the piece that, so can you talk about that just a little bit, what the timing is?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, um, yes, so you um you can only enact increments of grocery receipts two times a year, um, in January and July, and you have to time that. It's three months prior to, um, there's an ordinance that has to be adopted and there's timing um that plays into that. So you would probably, well, based on where, basically in November, you would be looking at July before that would would be enacted.
So we would vote on it?
In March.
In March.
Or you could do it prior to March, you could, but.
But no later than March.
That would be no later, you could do it no later than.
We don't have enough time to do it now. So that would give us, I I actually like that because that would give us some time. I know that we've talked about doing some more of these strategic planning conversations that would give us some time to come up with something that we all agreed on and how we were gonna do that.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Just sort of muttering here.
Well, you know, I I I, when I brought this up to the chair, I knew this is something that wasn't going to be something that was going to be quick. And what I wanted to do was put it, but so the plan would be put in motion, just like the Mr. Chair said, you know, having a plan. 'Cause we have so many needs from 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 salaries, you know, our our sheriffs and our other people are suffering because our salaries are not at all keeping up with any kind of inflation. But we have other services that we need, other projects. So this way, you know, those can be discussed and any additional money's garnered from a one-eighth, you know, could be put to the best possible use as you guys decide.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Bill?
Yeah, I appreciate the, not necessarily the discussion on the tax, but but I do appreciate the discussion on the prioritization of needs, the plan. And 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 the fact that we do have a lot of needs, just prioritizing that. It's a hard time to raise taxes, so we, if we're going to do that, definitely need to have a good something that's really needed to spend the money on. And I I think we do have those needs, uh you mentioned fleet replacement. And I'm thinking of some other needs that we have that we get together and uh prioritize those. I'd also like to know what uh, if, when you're doing research, if you could get us something on what other communities' grocery receipts tax rates are, that should be pretty easy. And then cost to the average citizen or, I'm specifically thinking about um just to be selfish, my mother-in-law, she's on the fixed income and what it would cost her. I hear about uh it pretty often, when she goes to the grocery store, she remember, she knows the price changes and and those kinda things, and I know she's not alone, this is not a wealthy county and we're not a wealthy state, so.
We have lots of people in our, we have lots of people in our community that are on fixed incomes.
Yeah, and it doesn't seem like much money to me, but uh that eighty dollars a year, whatever it's cost, I can't remember.
Something like that.
Is um, it's, it's big when you're getting your car repossessed and you can't go, you don't have anything to drive to work.
It's also big when you have a, you know, a two or three or four or five hundred dollar copay on a prescription.
Yeah, right.
Mr. Chair, it, yesterday I got my my gas bill and there was a flyer included in it. And seeing that the the price per therm is going to double this year. And which most of the people here in Grant County, they uh they use gas, natural gas to heat their homes. And it just made me think, you know, uh our employees, you know, that that is certainly gonna be putting another burden on them. So everything included and i- it is a very difficult decision to make. And it's gonna be a hard one for you guys to make, so. A, a good plan would be the one.
I'm going to find my, go ahead commissioner.
This is going to come too late to help for our employees for this winter. We now realize that, but presumably that will also be a problem in future winters. Hopefully people take advantage of the, the funding for more efficient, uh, heating and cooling systems that's available through the, the Inflation Reduction Act. There's a lot of funding for low-income folks to improve the efficiency of their heating and cooling. You know, one of the, one of the structural issues that we're facing as a county is that the state has imposed a cap on how fast property tax, property values can go up and therefore property taxes. And that limit is three percent a year. And, uh, as long as our expenses are increasing faster than that, even if housing prices are going way up, uh, our property tax revenues will never catch up. And, uh, I suspect that some people realized when they put that cap in that they would eventually be shifting tax burden from property taxes to sales taxes. This is exactly what happened in California after Prop 13 when I lived there. The property taxes, uh, just went way down and, and governments had to make it up elsewhere. Uh, and I feel that that's part of what's happening here. Another piece, of course, is the state is not funding, uh, detention center for state detainees. We are paying, what is it now, eighty, ninety percent of the cost of detaining state detainees. And so in a couple of ways, the state is sort of forcing us to do this. Those are a couple of preliminary thoughts I have about this question. And I'm also curious, you know, our item D is, uh, funding for Health and Human Services Department. Presumably this discussion bleeds well into that one. Is that, is that your idea, Commissioner Edwards? Local option grocery receipts tax could help fund a H, Health and Human Services Department?
It's not actually.
It's not? Okay.
Maybe in the future, but it's not in the immediate.
All right, well, I'll wait for D to hear what your thoughts are about that. But that, to me, that would seem like one really good use of a new tax would be a new department providing new services. Otherwise, why do we need a new tax? But I'll, I'll wait and listen. Thanks for bringing it up. I, you know, appreciate the chance to just start thinking about it. And that's why my thoughts aren't all that well formed, just starting to think about it.
Mr. Brown, you mentioned three things, I think. Three percent, uh, property tax cap, state detainees and just detention center funding generally?
No, I think it was only two.
Oh, it was only two?
I think it was just the.
Okay.
The property tax cap and the, uh, the detainees, both of which are state decisions, but that impact county finances.
So I'd be curious to know, um, given those comments, if, um, Mr. Chair, who is, I think, on the board of the, New Mexico counties, are either of these, uh, things, the three percent property tax cap or the state detainees priorities for this legislative session for New Mexico counties?
The detention center is, that's priorities, the, the reimbursements and the help with that.
Specifically on state detainees?
The state detainees, yes. I don't recall them anything about property taxes. I know there was clerk affiliate, there's, uh, treasurer, there's all certain things, but I don't remember hearing anything on, on your second. But I know the detention centers are, are top priority. I really don't think we're going to get anywhere on them, you know, and, you know, not two things that, you know, and, and that's part of our, our, our taxes here and, and, uh, and that's probably a conversation I want to have more with, with our county manager, coming up with some ideas, but when our budget is four point one million dollars to run a detention center out of a fourteen million dollar budget, and then we turn around and we get a reimbursement from the state for sixty-five thousand dollars, I don't think that even covered one in me. But, you know, and that's a sore subject to me, for me, because being at these New Mexico county meetings and looking at legislative priorities, you know, it's hard to swallow. You know, there, there's so many mandates and, and I'm not saying that the people that do, you know, I've always believed there's some people that are in custody that shouldn't be in custody. There's people that should be in custody that, that need to be there, but you know, there's so many mandates and I think that we're trying to fix it from the outside, inside, going out. I think we need to have more resources from the outside going before they go in, but that's just my opinion. You know, the other thing that I wanted to touch on, I could sit here on that jail all day, but anyway, that's a different story for me. But, you know, and, and, you know, it's nothing against what Commissioner Salas said and, and I totally agree with Commissioner Salas as far as, you know, our employees, uh, you know, deserving some of these raises in the way the inflation is. But, you know, on the other side of me, you know, I, I have been a union member. I have, you know, represented unions and, and, and stuff and some negotiations and so forth. So I'm pro-union. I, I don't want anybody to take, take or say that I'm not. I'm, I am pro-union. I mean, I saw what my dad went through, I saw what got fixed, you know, we had the dedication in, in, in Hanover. You know, that, that's all great stuff, but, you know, and I'm just going to throw this out there. And I, look, take a hard look and, and I respect what, what Commissioner Salas said, but there has to come a time where the county commission needs to stop and, and see what our union does. You know, they should be coming to the table, not us going to them and, and handing this money out to them. And, and the reason I say that is because I feel bad for our employees that are paying union dues. You know, what are they getting for their services? You know, we have a contract that's been expired. I told our last county manager that a letter needed to go out to somebody in Albuquerque. Hey, it's time to start negotiating this contract. You guys want raises? You guys pay dues? Let's try that channel. Let's try that avenue for a while. And, and you know, my goal into this is if, that the employees restart the union. That, because right now, the way I feel, I don't even know who the union president is. I don't even know if they've sent the letter. I know that my request had been to sending out a letter, no letter was probably sent out. I can check on that, but that's a discussion me and you are going to have, uh, but, you know, I've sat and sat and, and I've looked at this. How do we get this union to come to the table and start representing their employees the way they should? And to me, as maybe as commissioners and, and, you know, I know me and, and Commissioner Salas, and not everybody's voted for, don't take me wrong, but we have always come up to this table, podium, whatever you want to call it. And, you know, three percent raise, a quarter raise, this, that. But, you know, maybe it's time for us to take a step back and say, hey, union, organize yourselves, do what you need to do and approach our county manager and let's start negotiations. And maybe that's going to get our union, uh, up on their feet and, and, and moving forward. And if they don't want to do that, that is their choice. They can take another avenue. But, uh, you know, I, I, I'm at the feeling of, you know, our employees, you know, it's time for the employees to start looking at their representatives in the union to approach some of this stuff, not our county commissioners. And I think that's where it needs to go. So I understand what Commissioner Salas is. I was on board with Commissioner Salas. But I think it's time that, my opinion, and I don't know how the other commissioners, we take a step back and say, here it is. Either, you know, start your union up and approach the county manager and let's go to the table or we move on, whichever one it is. But that's how I feel. Sorry, but I think it's our job to come to, uh, the county manager. Commissioner Brown.
Yep, yeah, I, uh, I'm going to go ahead and give you a third structural issue now, since.
Oh, good.
I mentioned that maybe I had already done it, um, but it, it just, I just reminded myself about it. And it's also a question for our NMC, uh, representative, see if it's on their agenda. And that's a discussion we had about internet orders where, uh, finally, you know, they are being taxed and that's a good thing so that local retailers aren't at a disadvantage vis a vis internet retailers. But the way that taxes are apportioned by the state is based on zip code. And as we discussed, a heck of a lot of people in the county have eight eight oh six one zip codes or maybe a village of, you know, Santa Clara or Baird zip code, uh, even though they live outside of those municipalities. And those revenues go to the municipalities instead of to the county. So there is another structural issue that's reducing our, uh, revenues. And, uh, it does seem to me there would be ways to address it, uh, and I don't know if the NMC is considering that or not.
That hasn't come up for, for a few months. I think when it came up was, uh, when this first started and, and, you know, our community or our county started seeing that, you know, I'll give you myself for an example. I'm not home, I'm either in meetings, doing things. So when I order something, I have it shipped to Eagle Mail Services, which is an eight eight oh six one.
Yep.
So that grocery receipts tax is going to go to the Thomas Silver. That's, you know, my fault, but, um, you know, I'm sure a lot of people do that. And, and the reason for that is so packages don't get taken or, or, well, not some, my dogs don't destroy it, they just throw it over the fence. But it hasn't come up in, in, in quite a few months, so maybe it's time for me to, uh, make a phone call to our director or maybe even Sardine can help out with that calling and see if that's going to ever come up again, so, so it can be discussed because you are right.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that's, I think that's a really, I'm, I'm glad that your, uh, that your brain caught that up. Cause that's one of the things that I think, you know, we need to really understand. Uh, this, this also goes to the three percent property tax cap in my mind is, you know, counties are being asked to do a lot of things and we're not getting a lot of help.
Yeah.
To do that. And, um, those are the kinds of things that I think we need to really make a priority when we're talking to our legislators. You know, we're talking about a tax increase because we are footing the bill for these kinds of things. And I just think it's, it's important and I appreciate you bringing that up.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Salas.
Well, I think my final comment is that I, I was watching the news, sitting there watching the news and it brought me to reflecting, you know, over my service here and thinking about you guys in the future. And, uh, the reason that I wanted to bring this up because is that I think that finances is going to be your biggest hurdle. You know, there's so many things that are increasing, you know, our, our jail is like a tremendous money pit that you're going to have to address before it overtakes the, the budget. You know, it's going to be that the county is going to be just working for the jail. And it, there's, you know, the increase that I said in gas, that is going to be something that is going to hit the jail, you know. Uh, I just think that finances is going to be such a tremendous hurdle for you guys here in the next couple of years. And to me, this was just one way of trying to approach it. So, uh, I have you guys in mind when, you know, because these issues are going to come up. And to me, honestly, I, I think that right now, it is one of the most pressing issues that you guys are going to have to look at. So good luck.
Thank you.
Have a follow-up comment.
Go ahead.
So, um, Mr. Salas mentioned something and, um, it, uh, I think is part of a, a discussion that we had maybe at the last commission meeting. You know, the increase in, um, uh, gas costs, heating costs. And, um, and Mr. Brown then followed that up with, there's going to be, um, you know, federal money coming for the, from the Inflation Reduction Act for, uh, low income, improvements for low-income families, you know, to take advantage of, to help with heating and cooling. And there's a couple of things I want to mention there. One is, um, we really need to be focusing on solar and wind and how we can do that, you know, in, for community. Uh, community solar and, you know, maybe individual wind and things like that that will address some of those costs. As we know, uh, at least part of the reason why fuel costs are going to be really high this winter and I think we can be really appreciative of the fact that we don't live in Europe.
Yeah.
Because their fuel costs are going to make ours look positively rosy.
Yeah.
But, you know, there's a lot of pressure on fossil fuels and, um, we need to be really proactive on how we're looking at, uh, solar and wind in that context. And I know that, uh, particularly the three of you have really been, um, pushing that and I think it's just something that we need to continue to talk about. The other thing I want to bring up and, uh, I don't really know anything about what's in the Inflation Reduction Act uh, in the context of what Mr. Brown is talking about. But, uh, I've spent many years in this community working with, uh, low-income families and, uh, seniors, uh, living on fixed income. And, uh, one of the challenges in the past with, uh, providing services around helping, uh, families who need assistance around heating, cooling and that sort of thing is that, um, the funds don't go directly to people who are renting their properties. They go to the property owners. And, um, and I, I, there's a lot of instances that I could specifically name that it didn't actually benefit the renter of the property eventually. The other thing is that, um, we need to be really aware of is that, um, many of these weatherization and energy efficiency improvement programs don't apply to single wides. And, um, that is something that we also need to be really aware of because there are a lot of fixed income and low-income families living in manufactured housing in the county. And so, um, I just, I want to remind us of that. And I also want, um, uh, to encourage us to be really proactive as a county on, um, you know, one of the things that I was thinking about when we were thinking about, when you were talking about the, um, energy efficiency is I can't get a plumber or an electrician.
Back to trades.
Exactly. And, um, what we, I can't find a handy person, you know, I mean, I know that there are people out there that do that kind of thing. They're so busy.
Yeah.
That, you know, uh, yeah, I could get to you maybe in six or eight months or, you know, whatever. And so it, it, all of these things are interconnected and we need to be really thinking about the trades piece as well. And so when we talk about, you know, what our priorities are and I just, I want to sort of bring this back to the whole idea of vocational tech is it's, you know, they're all connected and we're going to have to be thinking about all of these things in the same basket, if you will.
Well, we've had a lot of conversation. Commissioner Billings has been part of those conversations, Freeport, Western New Mexico University. Our last county manager getting ready to invite, you know, uh, our county manager away. But, you know, it looks like we're, we're on track trying to get that vocational center. So we're hoping that, you know, three years or so that, uh, it'll be up and, and going, which are going to have a lot of these trades. Welding, electrical, um, plumbing, you know, uh, there, there's even been talk about putting together a, a CDL course with, with, uh, you know, uh, Freeport is interested in, in donating land, uh, to, uh, to Western because they're the ones that are going to carry the accreditation and so forth. So I know that's been going on pretty, pretty good and, and those conversations are still happening. I think in, in beginning of November, those, uh, conversations are going to continue to start shoring up some theme. Biggest thing we need to do is like we did with our, uh, ICIP, bring that up to, uh, to, uh, number six. Try to get some of that money coming in, so.
You know, I just, I, I just want to follow up on what you said about the CDL. You know, I had a conversation with, uh, Laura Phelps. I toured the mine down in Tyrone a couple of years ago and something she said to me, uh, during that tour is really stuck in my mind. All of their over-the-road trucking is, is, all their contracting for over-the-road trucking is, that money is happening outside Grant County. You know, we should have three or four trucking companies in Grant County that are contracting to do that kind of stuff, so anyway.
And then the other piece, sort of what I mentioned is sort of like we saw with the economic, with Guida, the Economic Development Group filming on there. We're already behind the eight ball on that. I mean, I'm sorry, but, you know, that, to me, that should be taken off. It should be, we should go somewhere else. Don't, yeah, and all these other places are already there. It seems like we're always behind everything, you know. It seems like we're always behind everything, you know. And I know Commissioner Edwards has got me going on this one, but, you know, it, it just, you know, are we going to be behind the eight ball on renewable energy? That's why we keep, you know, I keep saying we need a five, 10-year plan, because we have certain groups that are, you know, let's get rid of gas, no, they bring in a lot of money, you know, let's get rid of this, let's get rid, but once they get rid of that, what's that kind of going to do? We do not have the infrastructure to do what we need to do. So do we fall behind again, or do we sit up there and say, let's do a plan, so when it does happen, eventually it will, it might not be in the next 10 years, 20 years, but it will happen eventually, we have the infrastructure to just move right along to that.
We are ready.
We're ready.
Ready.
So anyway, I'm going to get off my horse on that, but we done with this?
[laughing]
We are, okay. Moving on to the next item, which is D, is going to be potential funding for Health and Human Services Department. Commissioner Edwards, the floor is yours.
So I want to thank Commissioner Solis for the softball that he lobbed on this one.
Makes yours look cheap.
No, we.
I thought it was going to be a short meeting, so.
Well, I wrote, I wrote it down right on my piece of paper, money pit. So that is, what I have to talk about is a cure for that money pit. So in September, I asked for us to begin considering an ordinance to create a Department of Health and Human Services. And we had some discussion around that and I made the commitment in that meeting to follow up on some questions about how we would potentially fund that. And so the purpose of this item today is to share with you the information that I've got in response to your questions. So, and a couple of things I want to say, so there might be some pieces of information here that are really random, and this is one of them. We've been calling this a Health and Human Services Department for, I've, I should amend that, I've been calling this a Health and Human Services Department since I've started this conversation, which started before I got elected the first time. And Jamie Michael from Las Cruces has shared with a number of people that the, that if she could do it, she would go back and not call it Health and Human Services because it's, that makes it so tightly connected to the state and that they spend an inordinate amount of time on issues that are completely unrelated to what they're doing in that department because those, because the public sees them as an offshoot of state office. So I don't know what we're going to call it, but maybe Health and Human Services shouldn't be it. Anyway. So I've always thought of Donaona County as being the example of what a county is doing that's really amazing with the Health and Human Services. But it's not a very good example for Grant County, and so the example I'm going to use for this conversation is Rio Arriba County. And so you guys may remember that in the, in the 90s, mid to late 90s, Rio Arriba County got a lot of public attention nationwide for, for having the highest per capita heroin addiction rate in the country. And what they did was they created the first county Health and Human Services Department specifically to address their opioid addiction problem. They are currently an office of somewhere around 25 people. They do a lot of very interesting things in that office, most of which I am not advocating for Grant County to do, because I don't actually think that we should be doing direct service. And they're doing a lot of direct service, case management and that sort of thing. But I do think that what they're doing around case management and those sort of things are a model for what we should be looking at doing in Grant County, not necessarily through the county, but through our partners. So I'm going to just talk, oh, and then the other thing I want to say is that, you know, as part of the ARPA funding that we allocated to do, to start this whole process of a Health and Human Services Department, was allocated and awarded to Insight Network to help us develop county priorities and to look at funding priorities for Health and Human Services. And it's my understanding from the chair that we are going to be hearing from Insight in November about what they have come up with as a report for a number of priorities, including this, and that we'll hear directly from them about Health and Human Services. So I'm not going to talk about any of that at this point. I'm just going to talk about the funding piece. So the three, the three pieces that I talked about last time were indigent funds, ARPA funds, and the opioid settlement money, and there were some questions around that, which I have answers to. One is, yes, we can use indigent funding, there are some limits, and Linda, feel free to dive in at any point if I'm about to go off the rails, tell a lie. But we currently have, so we currently have a little over $700,000 in unencumbered indigent fund money. And what I mean by unencumbered is we collect that, the state takes their share, and then we get some back. And so this is, the 700,000 is money that the state has already taken their share, belongs to Grant County.
Can, I know I'm interrupting a flow, but on that, can I ask you a clarifying question about that? Do you know how much that changes year to year, like that's presumably cumulative for a few years?
Yes.
And how much is it annually?
So annually, okay, so last this year, we received about $800,000. And you know what, I don't have exactly the amount. So out of those 800,000, I guess we're only spending whatever we send to the safety net care pool, which this year in itself is about $423,000.
And so.
So it's about an average, about $400,000 that we send to, to.
To the state.
Back to the state for the safety net care pool.
So we're getting about 50% of what we collect. And then the other thing that it goes to is detention center healthcare. So we're spending that money on detention center healthcare.
Well, no, so with the detention center piece of it, that was a 1/8 grocery receipts tax increment that originally was earmarked for the indigent fund, but I think.
Oh, that's right.
Couple of years ago.
Yes, that's right.
That was, we amended the ordinance so that that piece of the grocery receipts tax would go into the general fund.
Right.
So that's how it's paying.
Paying for indigent.
Indigent healthcare for the detainees.
For the detainees.
From that one piece of the GRTs.
And again, you should correct me if I'm wrong, Linda, but my recollection from our conversation is that what, what we're getting from that increment is not covering the total cost at this point, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. So we're actually taking, we're actually using general fund money to.
That doesn't add up.
So the medical cost is about.
900,000.
About 900,000, okay.
Oh.
And so we're collecting.
Not just the part that we approve as a board, but the whole contract with the medical providers at the detention center? Okay, that makes sense.
And we can't use the indigent fund to make up that difference because it's commingling funds that are, that the state allow, does not allow us to commingle, correct?
That is correct. We could use that indigent, indigent fund piece of the GRT to pay for additional medical costs, but it would have to be accounted for in a separate fund. Instead of the general fund. It would be accounted for in the indigent fund.
Right. Okay. So then what we're allowed to do is we're, we would be allowed to spend 8% of the indigent fund money that we collect on administrative costs of a program. So 8%, which is around $65,000, is that what we came up with?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Because what the act reads is it says 8% of the amount of revenues in the fund over $500,000, but not over $1 million.
So that.
So if we collect 800,000, we can use 8% of that to use towards administrative fees.
Who came up with that?
Professional pretzel.
So in our case, there's roughly 300,000, it sounds like, between 500,000 and a million, right? There's the 500,000 to 800,000.
It's 500 to $1 million.
Right, but in our case, per year.
We have 800.
What's that?
In our case, we do have the 800,000.
800.
So about 300.
8% of 300,000 is only 24,000, not 65,000, so are we going wrong here?
So I'm reading, I may be reading it incorrectly, but I'm reading it as the full 800,000 that is collected.
Doesn't sound like it. It sounds like we can't do any 8% on the first 500,000.
8% of the amount of revenues in the fund over $500,000.
The amount of.
Okay. Of over $500,000, but not over $1 million.
To me, that means 300,000.
Because whatever's stolen.
Yeah.
I think if we send you the whole act, that will help you understand, so it's broke down in three different tiers, depending on if your indigent fund collects so much, then you get 10%, 8%.
Yeah.
So we'll send you the whole act, and then I think it'll make more sense.
The first 500 is a different rate. The second 500 is at 8%.
So where we fall in, because we are, we collect 800,000 in revenue, we have 8%. So it's not, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So it's around $65,000.
Beautiful.
And I'm sorry, I had all that on my desk and I left it on my desk, so thanks for being prepared, Linda. Okay, so, so I did some, oh, so that's the indigent fund, and then we have $148,000 left of, so we allocated $300,000 to this project, of which $100,000 is going to Insight Network and the grant writing, the whole, all that piece, and then 200,000 to the actual staffing, of which we have $148,000 left, okay? Out of that 200,000. And then I talked to Ben, I've talked to Ben several times, I called him yesterday just to make absolutely sure. He is confident that there will be some amount of opioid settlement money that we will be allowed to spend on administrative costs of opioid use reduction programming. So if the, if the department was doing 50% opioid use reduction programming and 50% of other stuff, then we could fund either 50% of the department head, or 50% of another person, or fund the department head one way and an opioid specialist one way, there's a lot of different ways that we could do that. But he's confident that we would be able to use opioid settlement money to do that. So I did some back of the math, back of the envelope math, and as, and I just want to back up for a second, as you may recall, what I was advocating for in September was making this an actual department, so that the primary person that we had in there was a department head. And so my back of the envelope math, and this, I'm just going to admit upfront, is not exact because it doesn't exactly line up with the salary study, so I'm just doing an estimate. $75,000 for a department director. Linda told me to use 48% of the salary for the cost of benefits, PERA, all of that sort of stuff. 48%. That is a big number, I nearly fell out of my chair when she told me that. It was like, did I hear that correctly? So that's $36,000, and then around $31,000 for an administrative assistant and benefits for that person. So 156,880 for salary costs, and then I put in $17,000, $17,120 for travel to conferences, supplies, grant writing, et cetera, for an annual expense of $174,000. So that's for two staff people and all the stuff that they need per year. And I was thinking about two years to get started until other things, you know, really started to happen. So we have $148,000 left in the ARPA. And so we have this indigent fund, Linda's going to actually make the calculation, but we could take that 8% for the accumulated, the years in the accumulated indigent fund. So we'd need to come up with $200,000 in some combination of indigent funds and additional ARPA for a two-year start on, on the program. So I'm going to stop there and ask if you have any questions.
So what?
Because I can see a big question on the chair.
I do have one, because our directors, I don't think, now, when you say $75,000, is that just the salary, or does that include?
That's salary.
Just salary? And our directors, I don't think are even close to that.
It's about 73, 74, I believe.
So I'd like to see it more aligned with.
She just said 73, 74.
Is that what our directors are giving?
I made an, I just did an estimate based, I got all this information from Linda, so.
Wow, they're doing pretty good. I'll leave it alone. I thought they were more lower in, you know, high 50s, 60s.
Now, I did look at the salary structure, so.
That answered my question, then.
Anybody else have any questions at, at this point? Mr. Bill?
None on the funding.
Okay, so, so my thinking on this is, two years of funding it, funding this department through a combination of indigent and ARPA would get them started well enough to be able to then have a basis for other funding sources. So Rio, Rio Arriba County is funding their department through a combination of gross receipts tax, indigent funding, and they write seven to 12 large grants a year. Now, they also have somewhere around 25 employees, and so my thinking is that at least in the beginning, in the first, like, say, one to four years, you know, we might be looking at writing one to three grants. This is, this, this information, this grant conversation is going to be part of what Rosalinda Natibadab talks about when she talks to us about what, about her research and the report on how we can fund the priorities that she's looking at. One thing that I will just tell you that she was very clear to me on is there is a lot of money out there right now that we could be getting. It's around opioid, it's around ARPA, it's around some of these big, big appropriations that the federal government is making. She's, she is very confident that money around substance use disorder, behavioral health, and mental health is going to be flowing significantly for at least the next five years. But she thinks having a department and a department head is going to be absolutely critical to getting some of these grants, just in terms of what kind of capacity they will be looking at. So, does that answer all the questions that you guys had and that I said that I would talk about?
I have, I have some.
Go ahead, go on.
Go ahead.
Sure, okay. First, do you happen to know the population of Rio Arriba County?
I don't, but it's very similar.
Is it?
Do you happen to know?
I was thinking it might be more like 50.
Yeah, I was just, I was going to say, let's look it up.
Oh.
38,960.
So a little more.
In the 2020 census.
So a little, so about 10,000.
Thanks, Ms. Google.
Yeah. Ms. Google.
Why don't you want to include direct services?
Well, it's not that I don't want to, it's that I'm not, I don't want to shut the door on any future growth. It's that I think in the next one to three years. It's that I think in the next, uh, one to three years, um, it will take everything we've got to get off the ground, and for this to be a viable and stable department that is, you know, gonna be self-funding, and it may be that direct services would be part of that in the future. I think some of what Rio Arriba County is doing is really, really interesting, but I also think that there, um, is not gonna be a lot of agreement on whether the county should be providing direct services or not. And so, I personally think that we should get it off the ground and then, you know, look at it as we go. Um, I will tell you, um, that, and I'm just gonna look up the Rio Arriba, um, website really quick. Uh, they have a, um, managed, uh, uh, so they have a, um, a program called Pathways, it's an outcomes-based approach on improving healthcare, and, um, they have been using Pathways Care Coordination, um, which is an outcomes-based chronic disease management service delivery model.
There's a lot of words.
It's a lot of words, but what that tells me is it's something similar to what HMS is doing. It's also something similar to what we've been talking about at the hospital, about coordinated care. Um, it involves case management. Um, uh, their, uh, their data on their outcomes is pretty, pretty good, includes, you know, the things that we're dealing with in this community, um, you know, in terms of chronic conditions like, um, you know, heart disease, hypertension, uh, obesity, those kinds of things. And they are, uh, connecting them to, uh, mental health and to substance use disorder, and having huge success with that. They have, like, five case managers doing that program. So, at some point, you know, it may be something that we wanna look at. Or, do we wanna strengthen the programs at the hospital and HMS?
I mean, yes.
And, um, part of the reason why I'm inclined to think about that is really directly related to my experience in working with Cassandra Hartley, uh, because what she was phenomenally successful at in her short time here was facilitating these or other agencies and organizations that are already doing this work to come to the table and talk about how to do partnerships. And that, to me, is the value in what she was doing, was getting the already existing things that are happening to the table.
No, that's really valuable.
Yeah, it's huge.
You know, the only thing that, I'm sort of, I don't wanna be providing, you know, our job, or what I think a lot of our job is supporting, you know, HMS, you know, Tu Casa's probably in a little different area for us, but the hospitals in another, but we, we should be supporting this. One thing that I don't wanna get into or, or wanna do is start having or doing the same things, Health Council. Start, you know, if we come up with a plan for this, what are we gonna do, but I don't wanna be doing the same work that these organizations are doing. Because then, to me, that takes away, we're not supporting them, it's, we're stepping on their toes. And the more programs, and, and that's a lot of the things that we have in Grant County, we have so many different groups working on the same thing, we're not getting anywhere.
And that's exactly my point about the strength that Cassandra had, was that coordinating piece.
Right, right, exactly. So it'd be like, good to hear, and, and I think we discussed this last time, sitting down and, and probably in a retreat like you said, and, and working at, looking at, okay, what does HMS do, what does Tu Casa do? Hila Regional, I don't know what they do really, and I'm on the governing board, but anyway, as far as mental health, and I don't mean it in a bad, but you know what we've been through, and coming up with a, a job description like we had talked about.
So, um, a couple of things, so we had a job description created, uh, when we hired the first time, and, um, Ms. Hartley did provide us with an, uh, uh, input into what, based on the work that she did, um, as the coordinator, she provided input into a revised job description. So we do have some information on that.
You guys do, or maybe the county, but we don't.
Right, no, I'm just saying, we have that, and.
To look at it.
We, we have those resources. I'm using that as the big we. Um, I would also mention that, um, much, very similar to what we're doing now, and I think Crystal actually has been a big part of this. Um, uh, Rio Arriba County has their Health Council as a significant partner in what they're doing in terms of addressing, um, county issues, and, um, we had the Health Council, we have the Health Council in that area, uh, and working with, um, Cassandra and I think, and, uh, the thing that, um, I think is interesting about what, uh, the Rio Arriba Health Council uh, is specifically, uh, serves as the planning council for the county commissioners on community health and wellness. So I thought that was really interesting.
It is.
Um.
How do they appoint their members?
I, I don't know, it just talks about, so I've been trying to get a hold of, so Lauren Reichelt, the person who runs the Health and Human Services Department for Rio Arriba County is, you know, like a Health and Human Services rock star, and I've been trying to talk to her for weeks, and I just realized that she doesn't work there anymore, she went to work for the state. So, but anyway, um, the other thing that they have that I think is really interesting, um, that we could, so they're, they're working on senior services and adult daycare. Uh, that is something that, um, Cassandra was, um, working on. And, um, the other thing that I think is really interesting that they have, they have a six-member AmeriCorps Vista team, um, which are, you know, AmeriCorps funds programs specifically for, um, people to work in low-income communities. And so, I think, there's a lot of really great things that Rio Arriba County is doing, and I think it would serve as a model for what we could do.
How do they?
Yeah.
Here's another detailed question, it's not fair to ask you, but one problem I've run into with AmeriCorps is they require you to take a year off after three years?
Yeah.
And how do you establish a stable program in that situation?
Yeah, no, I, there's, I, I, I do think that one of the things you have to do is weigh the pros and cons.
Yeah.
But three years of somebody is, is quite a bit.
Yeah.
It's, it's more stability than we have in a lot of different areas in our community.
Fair point.
Anybody else have any other questions? So, um, I just wanna make a closing comment, I think, uh, you all are, uh, highly aware of the fact that I have, um, a pretty, uh, sizable sense of urgency around this, uh, I don't think that's been any secret. Um, and, uh, I'm going to just, um, I wanna, what I try to do when I talk about things like this is bring this, bring something to the conversation that, that we can all, like, really relate to and understand, rather than just a whole bunch of data and all that. And, um, when Sheriff Gomez gave his report in the last commission meeting, uh, something really stuck in my head that he said, and, um, that was that they had, uh, um, had a, a drug bust that netted nineteen hundred tablets of fentanyl. And, um, we are certainly, uh, hearing a lot about the fentanyl problem in Grant County. Um, the sheriff is regularly reporting, um, um, challenges, we've heard about, um, the issues that have happened in the detention center, we've heard about, um, what has happened in the courthouse, uh, we've heard about what has happened to law enforcement. Um, you know, we've had babies almost die, there's just, there's a lot of, um, scary things that we're hearing around fentanyl. And so, um, I did a little research and it sent me down, um, a little bit of a rabbit hole. And, um, to just, uh, not take you all down that rabbit hole myself, uh, with me, uh, I will tell you that nineteen hundred tablets of fentanyl is about a hundred and ninety grams of fentanyl. According to the CDC and the DEA website, depending on your body size, tolerance, and past use, is, it is, uh, generally considered that two milligrams of fentanyl is fatal. So, uh, I was so shocked by the number that came out on my calculator that I called the math expert for the commission and said, "Harry, I need you to check my math just to make sure that I really, um, have come up with the right answer here." And so, based on, uh, the DEA and CDC, um, data, nineteen hundred tablets of fentanyl is enough fentanyl to cause ninety-five thousand fatalities. Just think about that for a minute. That is a third more than we have population in the four county area. It's a serious problem. Um, it is causing serious problems in our detention center, in law enforcement. Uh, it is directly related to the mental health, behavioral health, and other substance use disorders that are happening in our community, and I really, really want the county to take the lead on this, and I think it's appropriate that we do so, and, um, that's my story, I'm sticking to it.
Mr. Billings, did you have something, or don't you, or?
Yeah, I, I just, I'm, so I appreciate the ideas on funding, but what would, I'm sorry, what would the, what would this coordinator actually coordinate, I mean, as far as fentanyl, or any of the other services, how would, would there be anything measurable? And, and does Rio Arriba County have anything measurable in results?
I think there's, I think there's a ton of measurable data from Rio, Rio Arriba County, and I am working on getting that. I think there's a lot of measurable things that this coordinator could do. Um, you know, what we were working on, uh, was nine-eight-eight rollout, there's a lot of measurable things related to nine-eight-eight rollout, um, and implementation. Uh, nine-eight-eight is the new, uh, nine-one-one for mental, uh, health, um, crises. Uh, there's, I think, um, there's a tremendous number of opportunities to have measurable data around, uh, recidivism, around, um, you know, um, I don't know if recidivism is the word that you use with an actual, with, with addiction, recidivism, of course, is whether you're repeating, going back to, um, incarceration, but, uh, there's incredible opportunities to look at, um, people who, uh, are clean and sober for a certain amount of time. Um, you know, fentanyl is, is creating a lot of economic problems in Grant County, I think there's lots of ways to measure that. Um, and I think, you know, what we need to do is build in, build in, um, those measurable outcomes into whatever programming we do. And I, I'm confident, based on the work that I've been doing on mental, behavioral health, and substance use disorder over the last three years, and working very closely with Cassandra, and seeing what she was doing, um, I think there's loads, I'm confident there's loads of ways to successfully measure um, what we're doing. To address the specific coordination piece, um, she was, um, very far down the road on coordinating, um, the hospital, all of the, uh, provider agencies and organizations, HMS, um, Trauma and Recovery, Jim Helgert's group, all of those, coordinating them on, uh, nine-eight-eight response, uh, coordinating those organizations on, you know, who's offering what kind of services and who could be doing, you know, other services, what are we actually doing? I think there's a wealth of, um, coordination opportunities, because as we've said, uh, there's a lot of organizations in our community that are providing services. So, and I'll just give you an example. When we came up with, um, so, the way nine-eight-eight works is, uh, you call nine-eight-eight, you're identified by your area code, the call goes to a call center in New Mexico. I'm not gonna comment on the fact that people, that people's phone numbers are really portable, because the state hasn't addressed that yet. But if you have a five-seven-five area code, they're gonna send you to a call center in New Mexico. What that call center does is, um, have a conversation with you, and based on that conversation, uh, either um, help you coordinate services, or, you know, call nine-one-one, whatever's appropriate. Uh, OpenBuds is, um, the software that the New Mexico Call Center is using for resources, and so theoretically, what they should be able to do, if you call nine-eight-eight and you need services and you live in Grant County, they should be able to look on their, um, resource and find and align you, or, uh, connect you with whatever services you need that are based in Grant County. We have a list of seventy-seven organizations in Grant County that could provide services. So, I think that by itself gives us a, a huge, um, number of agencies and organizations to coordinate with to make sure that people aren't falling through the cracks.
Well, I share your opinion that we don't need to provide direct services, we have seventy-seven organizations that are already providing services.
Ma'am?
Yeah, I was gonna say something.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, what, in, in talking about that is, I would love to sit down with, with Border Area, with Tu Casa, with, uh, Grant County Health Council, with, with all these people that are providing these services, or at least getting what services they're providing, whether direct or indirect with the community, because the last thing I want is for the county to be spending money working on the same things that they are. I can see us taking a step back and saying, okay, well, we're not covering this area. You know, we're not covering that area, that's it. This is where we need to go. I would be happy and okay with that. But I'm not gonna be spending seventy-five thou, this is my opinion, I'm not gonna be spending seventy-five thousand dollars of taxpayer monies working on the same things Tu Casa's working on, Border Area's working on, HMS is working on, Grant County Health Council. So, I would like to see some of this in our job description, marry some of this.
So I, I think, I think it does, and I think we're very clear that the whole point of this is to not duplicate services. Um, and, um, in the body of work that Cassandra left behind are the answers to all those questions. And when we, you know, going back to what Mr. Billings said about coordinating, it's not us that needs to sit down with all those organizations, it's the department head of Health and Human Services, and that is what, in my opinion, I'm just saying in my opinion, and that is what Cassandra was doing, that's part of the coordination process. Is finding out what everybody's doing, finding out where the gaps in services are, and figuring out who should be stepping into those gaps. And, I don't think at any point in the process of when she was the Health and Human Services Coordinator, was there any thought that the county should be taking on direct services?
No, and I'm not so much talking just about direct services, I mean, I'm talking these other entities do provide other services for, for the community other than the direct services. And what I'm trying to do, because at the end of the day, our county manager's gonna, gonna, she's gonna supervise this employee, and she's gonna need something also to be able to supervise that employee with some of this direction or job description, or, or something like that.
Well, I, I think what I'm trying to articulate, Mr. Chair, is that I think the basis of all that is already there as a result of Cassandra being in that job.
And maybe it's because I have not seen that, that's why I have these questions.
Agreed, yeah.
Go ahead, there, Commissioner.
Really?
Really, go ahead.
Um, Commissioner Billings, are you, based on that conversation, uh, do you agree that coordination is an appropriate function for, uh, County Wellness Department?
I ju, I just don't know with, I, with seventy organizations and the Grant County Health Council being, I guess, one of those seventy, I just, I don't, I see a lot of chances that we would be duplicating something that somebody's already doing. But I do see a need to coordinate that, but that, honestly, that's what I thought the Grant County Community Health Council did, was, was coordinate services for people.
Okay, well.
And H, I know HMS, if you, you know, people go there for mental health services, and I guess, obviously, I know there's some coordination going on there, so I don't wanna duplicate the coordination services either, but.
So, so let me try to, is it okay if I try to respond to that? So, so let me try to, is it okay if I try to respond to that?
Sure.
So, I think, I think that we're a little at cross purposes on the, the definition of coordination in this particular case. There's no doubt that, say, Burgess to Wellness, for example, is coordinating services. But we do have a number of organizations in this community that are already duplicating services, or that we don't have good communication, good enough communication between the organizations to know which organization is providing what services and how to refer them. Now, we've tried to address that with one degree to some extent, to make sure that there is a resource that everyone has access to, that when they're sitting at their desk and they want to refer services and things like that. It's my observation that we, we don't have a coordinated response to the mental health, behavioral health, or substance use crisis in our community. We have, we have stepping up, we have the RISE program, but we don't have a coordinated response. And in fact, I would submit that we have lost a lot of ground in the last two years around, say, stepping up, for example. So, stepping up program is designed as an intercept model where at any point along that continuum, you intercept somebody and, you know, get them the services to not have to keep going along that continuum. So, the one intercept that is, the weakest link in that process is the coordination of services, providing a wraparound care model, if you will, so that a given person is getting all of their basic needs met, their housing, their food, their electric bill, they're getting, they have transportation to get to their appointments, you know, there's a whole plethora of things that would fall under the idea of a wraparound continuum. We don't have that. We have all the pieces, but we don't have a strong way to make sure that somebody in our community doesn't fall through the cracks. And it doesn't do any good to have, all the treatment in the world isn't going to do any good if you don't have housing, or, you know, if your basic needs aren't getting met. And so, how are we going to coordinate all those services? That's the coordination piece that I see, is that, you know, we're at the thirty-thousand foot view, and we're not going to actually call HMS and Tucasa and all that, but we are going to provide the structure to make sure that HMS is talking to whoever, does that make sense? Am I making any sense at all?
Yeah. Does that make sense?
You are to me, and I actually think we're a lot closer together than, than it felt like with the discussion. None of us wants to duplicate services, right? None of us even wants other organizations to be duplicating. That's just silly. And also, I think all of us recognize there are gaps in services, and the most obvious example being, I think, behavioral health as a gap right now that just opened up, and there it was. So, I, I think we're actually relatively close over those things, and, and what we really need probably is more months of learning about what all the services are, where the county could fit in. I, I think service coordination is a, is a central function of government, and it just makes a ton of sense to me. And I also think there are going to be areas, and I think you alluded to this, there are going to be areas that there aren't actually services being provided in, where the county might be their logical choice to provide actual direct services. So, I'm open to that possibility because grant-funded, nonprofit, volunteer-staffed organizations just aren't as stable as a local government. And we need stability in some areas. So, I don't have any preconceived notions about what those areas are, but I do have a notion that there will be some that, that we identify and we might need to provide services in. So, so I am open to the possibility of, of direct services. And I nominate the word wellness to be used in the department title as a way of avoiding the problem, Jamie Nichols.
I agree. Yeah, I'm all for that.
Okay. I think that's all I have to say.
Well, you know, and maybe for me, it's, I'm more of a visual person. I like to see something in front of me to say, this is where we're going to hit. Because, I mean, if you try to take me, I'm talking about, five different, four different opinions, five different opinions, at the end of the day, I'm still sitting here wondering, what are we going to do, how are we going to do this?
So, I will say this also. I've seen the draft document that Insight Network has put together for this, and I think seeing that document will really help also.
And when did we see it?
I think the chair is going to poll us on meeting dates to see it in November.
Okay.
So, so you will have the visual for that. You know, one other thing that I just want to say, and Harry said this, I just want to emphasize it, we have lost, over the last number of years, the people who provided some of these services. So, for example, Evangeline Zamora mentioned this today, you know, in 2017, the state, in all their wisdom, defunded health councils. And if we were relying on the health council to provide these coordination services and the state yanked the rug out from underneath us, that's not so good. And so, one of the sort of underlying things for me about the county doing this is I want it embedded in what I see as stability, and the county is that stability. We, the state never replaced Mary Stecker when she left the health promotions team. The state never replaced Michelle Geese when she left the health promotions team. It took them eighteen months to find her replacement. And one day, I don't even know if that young lady is still in that job. I met with her two weeks after she took the job, and she was so overwhelmed, she had no idea what she was doing. So, I don't even know if she's still in that job. We've lost, because of funding cuts in various organizations, hospital, HMS, you know, those sorts of things, we've lost all kinds of care coordination and case management positions. You know, those kinds of things, care coordination and case management is fundamental to making sure that people are not falling through the cracks in the services they need. And that's always the first positions to get cut in an organization that is suffering financially. And I just see the county as providing the stability to help all the other providers in this community be able to do the job that they need to do to meet the needs of our community.
Well, apparently, we're not going to get this, we're not going to get this done this month or next month.
No, 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 this was just meant to be a discussion.
Right, correct. So, I think we probably need to plan a little bit more.
We're still discussing.
And, and keep going on that because, I mean, I know, and, and maybe that visual will help for a lot of us. Unless there's anything else, I don't want to cut anybody off.
Mr. Chair, I could ask a clarifying question. I, I've heard Insight in a November meeting mentioned several times by the board. Is that something I'm coordinating that during a normal meeting, or is that something I need to know about for a quorum notice?
Well, probably a quorum notice, and I'll be discussing that in my commission comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. So, we're good with that one?
Yep.
And then, well, you know...
I just want to say I appreciate the conversation and, and the amount of time that you guys gave me to talk about it.
I think this is part of a retreat thing too, so, or not retreat, but a work session. Definitely. Okay, moving on to commissioner reports. Commissioner Billings, do you have a report?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Salas, do you have a report?
No.
Commissioner Edwards, do you have a report?
I think I've said plenty today.
Okay. Commissioner Brown, do you have a report?
None, no.
None? Well, good, I do. So, that was, one of the first ones I had on my commission reports is Insight is asked for two and a half hours sometime in November. She wanted to plan a meeting this month, but the conversation when I met with her was that we're going to have a county manager coming in on the twenty-fourth, so I wanted to wait for, for that, for her to come in. So, she's asking for some dates for at least two and a half hours to discuss, you know, some of this, this strategic plan, whatever it may be. But I'm also looking at leaving two and a half hours for her, but I would like to go back to the work sessions that we were having because there's a lot of unfinished business where we dropped off. So, if I could get commissioners to look at their calendars, give us a date sometime in November so we can have Kevin put together a work session like we used to, location, up to you, I'm open to any ideas. But it'd probably be a good eight-hour type thing, full day.
Are we canvassing on, on Monday, the fourteenth? Is that official?
On the fourteenth, yes. We are going to do the canvas on Monday, the fourteenth.
And the meeting's fifteenth and seventeenth, so it seems like that, that week is out. And maybe Thanksgiving week is out, I'm not sure.
So, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, ma'am.
And maybe this is just too much, because we all, we'll also have hospital board meeting on the seventeenth, so maybe this is just too much. But if we're doing an election canvas on the fourteenth, that will take us, what, fifteen minutes?
Yeah.
What if we just...
Hopefully, it takes us five.
Well, yeah. Well, yes, I'd like to give us a question. But what if we did it on the fourteenth since we're, since we're already getting together on that day?
It's a good idea, that way, because that, I mean, our morning's already shut that day. And does that fit with the rest of the commission?
So, we could do Insight in the morning, right after the election canvas, and then spend the afternoon...
And we could go do our things. That would be it?
And then the fifteenth, and then the seventeenth.
Yep.
We'll be together a lot that week.
And then we can enjoy Thanksgiving vacation.
That's right, not have to think about anything.
Because this is only two meetings we're going to have for November because Thanksgiving. And I'm assuming December's the same week, right?
Yes.
We have two.
So, you guys good for the fourteenth?
Okay, that looks like it works.
And that would be two and a half hours probably at least?
Well, it's going to be probably, I'm going to say ten minutes for the certification of, of votes or the elections, and then two and a half hours for Insight, and then I want to sit down and do the work session.
Four hours in the afternoon?
About four hours in the afternoon. Maybe take a lunch break, do four hours or so in the afternoon.
So, Mr. Chair, we have the canvas actually scheduled for ten?
Oh, is that right?
Well, that's what I have in my calendar. Is that right, Kevin?
I believe it's ten thirty, actually.
Ten thirty?
Yeah.
So, I wonder if we could do it at nine instead?
Or we can do Insight at, at eight?
Right.
Was that the clerk's requirement that it be at that time?
No, I just throw out the time.
No, that was the time provided by the chair.
Yeah, I just throw out the time.
It's whatever time you want to be able to do that special meeting on that Monday.
So, what if we did it at nine and then had Insight at nine-thirty?
Yeah.
And then us from one to five.
Let's go back to nine, and then Insight nine-thirty, and then we'll get you some paperwork on what kind of agenda we're going to put together.
And a lunch break from twelve to one?
Lunch break, twelve to one?
What day, was that again, Mr. Chair?
Fourteenth. So, everybody good with that?
Yeah, I guess so.
Starting at what time?
Starting at nine.
Seven AM.
Be here at ten. Nine. You know, I never knew I had a mute button here. Mute others.
No way.
It's four years, and I've never noticed that mute button.
That, yes, that's, that's always been available to you, Mr. Chair.
Why didn't you tell me?
That's hilarious.
So, okay, Kevin, Monday, the fourteenth, nine AM, for sure, the certification of the election, Insight, and then the rest will have the commission shoot, do whatever they want to put on the agenda. I don't know, maybe talking to Randy and Linda, I don't know if anybody has the last paperwork where we dropped off on our last work sessions with Mr. Zamora. But you might ask Randy if he has any of that, so we can look at that too.
As far as the notes of what was covered in those previous?
Well, I know you had notes, you did really good, so maybe we can go off your notes instead. Great, thank you for reminding me that.
And, and just to be clear, Mr. Chair, are we doing these as a closed executive session or as an open to the public type of workshop that you had before? You had a combination. Each meeting was slightly different. So, what are you envisioning? Are you envisioning an executive session? Are you envisioning simply a work session?
I'm envisioning a work session.
That's absolutely...
I'm envisioning a work session.
But it, so, then we're going to have a work session the next day, right? So, there's something that distinguishes it, and is it, that we're focusing on one or two very specific strategic sort of issues?
Yeah, we're, we're doing the strategic plan.
I don't want it to be a wide open...
Right, we don't really need like cats or anything. People are welcome to show up.
Okay, so, so what I'm hearing is we're having a special meeting at nine AM, because we have to have it as a special meeting to do your vote.
For canvassing.
Correct. So, we will close the special meeting so we can wrap that up, and then we'll move it into more of a, of a work session type environment, if someone in the public wants to see it, but you don't want it broadcasted or recorded, you just want the special meeting recorded for the purpose of the vote.
And maybe we don't do it here either because I don't like this arrangement here, and I don't like that arrangement.
I liked doing it at the town, of course, it might be cold.
But we're going to do the nine-thirty here for the presentation, right? We kind of skipped over that one.
Okay, so the nine o'clock special meeting is here.
Right.
We'll close and adjourn that. You'll then have this presentation that we're planning for an hour and a half here.
Two and a half hours.
Two and a half, sorry, I said an hour and a half, sorry. And then we'll discuss the location for the rest of the afternoon, is what I'm hearing.
Right, maybe we can go conference center for the rest.
The garage doors, the garage doors will be closed.
And I think that gives us more room for whatever we need to write.
Thank you.
Quorum notice, all that. Thank you, Kevin. Okay, so that's, so it's all commission reports, right? You know, one question I had, do, does anybody know, or if we can find out if the sheriff's often submitted that grant for that money that the governor was put out, you know, if you can ask, thank you, I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, would you remind me what that money was for?
Wasn't it for...
Are you talking about the retention recruitment money that was funded for positions?
Yes, yes. And I think there was a two-week deadline, so it's either passed or...
Okay.
Or very close. And I know I'd, I'd rather talk to, or I sent Lieutenant Burns an email, and I talked to the sheriff about it, so I just want to make sure, hopefully, we did some info.
I'll follow up with him.
Thank you. And then, the only other thing that I have is, you know, for the public, you know, there, again, and I stated this last time, Halloween's coming up, this weekend's going to be pretty busy for everyone, including law enforcement. And I hope that everyone really takes a look at all the trinket treats that are out there. They're probably the most safest avenue for, for people to take their kids and do that. So, hopefully, everybody does take advantage of that, be careful out there, check the candies, you know what's in the news, we just had a big old conversation on fentanyl. Just, you know, try to make it as safe as you can, and I hope everybody has a good weekend. Anything else, commissioners?
I do have one, and really quick. Just want to remind you guys that we have executive session at four-thirty this afternoon. Come...
Today?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hospital.
Okay.
And hospital meeting on Thursday at nine o'clock.
If those days, I didn't have today's. Okay.
Today's just...
Four-thirty?
Is that involved in that?
Okay, so...
It's just what?
I thought that was just for, I don't know, we can talk about it later.
So, can I, you know, next item of the agenda is going to be executive session in accordance with MSA nineteen-seventy-eight, ten dash fifteen dash one, H two, and limited personnel matter regarding the county manager's office would be talked about, if I can have a motion to that.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Brown. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Madam Deputy Clerk, could I have a roll call, please?
At least you can see the forward.
I always look at you...
I always look at you and I forget. Chairman Ponse?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Salas, Commissioner Billings, are you all aware you're entering into executive session?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, again. So we're going to have to have our executive session here, our auditors are still busy in the red room, so if I can have our county manager stay with us, and then, are you Ms. Corejo? If you can give me, and I hate doing this to you, if you can give us 10 minutes, we need to make a phone call to our attorney, is that what you still want to do? And we have to ask him one question, and then we'll have you come in. Thank you, and I apologize.
And I need a small break.